Call and meeting order, ask for a roll call.
Belsley, Blunier, Herr.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Could you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there's any public hearings tonight. Does anybody have any presentations or special reports? I do. Would the police chief join me at the podium, please? I want to congratulate you in the police department on a major save I heard this week. And so I have a presentation for you. Your new mascot. Somewhere between Farm and Fleet, McDonald's, Kroger, La Fiesta, somebody, a little girl, threw out a classic shaggy bear. This wasn't just any bear, it was a classic shaggy bear. And I have been told at home, on Facebook, at work, that one of our police officers picked up that bear.
That's correct. And we were able to return it to the grandma. She stopped in and wanted to give it back.
Well, in the police department's support there, you now have your own Build-A-Bear Police Department bear.
On behalf of all the officers, we appreciate it.
And it does come with a birth certificate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. You gotta have a little fun.
You can set it up by your microphone if you like. Any public comments? If not, the consent agenda tonight, the Ruger Meeting, May 21st to 2018, and the closed session, May 21st to 2018, and the approval of the bills. Could I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any comments? If not, call the roll.
Herr. Yes. Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have nothing tonight. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
I have one probably larger item tonight, Your Honor. At the last meeting, we were discussing what our budget would look like if we were to do it today with the savings that we have seen on our street projects mainly, on the bids that we've received. So I went through and did an analysis. I sent you a copy of that, but if you haven't had a chance, we'll just go through it real quick. In the original budget we discussed back in March, the biggest item that changed is the general fund. The general fund, in March, we were budgeting a deficit of $612,314. And with the known changes that have occurred, I'm estimating that the budget deficit will be $313,514, which is a reduction of that deficit of almost exactly $300,000. The majority of which was due to capital projects, the street projects coming in lower than what was anticipated. There's some other smaller changes that I talked about, the gas fund. The deficit there actually would increase by $8,000. The stormwater fund, the deficit would decrease by $21,000. Waste water fund, the deficit would decrease by $67,000. And most of those changes are due to the bids that were received on the street sweeper, on the Vactor truck, with Craig working with the unified groups that we got the bids through. We were able to get them lower than what was anticipated when the budget was done. The motor fuel tax fund, the deficit or the surplus for it would increase by $45,000. And that is due to the bids on the seal coat coming in lower. But overall, I'm looking at, with all the funds combined, we had budgeted a deficit, overall budget, of $337,924. And I'm anticipating now that that number will be a surplus of approximately $89,000. So that's an improvement of $424,000 from what we originally thought it would be. Pretty much everything is, you know, on track. We've only had a month so far of the fiscal year. I looked into the revenues. Everything's coming in as anticipated. As you know, the state passed the state budget last week, which will possibly improve our revenues for the general fund. That is not reflected here. In the prior year fiscal '18 budget that the state passed, they had reduced what they called the local government distributed fund, where they allocate the income tax and the use tax that they receive by per capita. They allocate that out to the municipalities and the county governments. They had reduced the initial number by 10% last year on the budget and was retaining that 10% to help offset the deficit on the state budget. So they have increased the allotment by 5%. So the reduction is only 5% this year compared to the 10% for last year. So that will help our budget somewhat. Last year, our income tax came in better than we anticipated because of the fact that they changed their payment cycle also. So we got 14 payments in the fiscal year '18 versus the 12 payments we normally do. So just as a synopsis, the budget for, you know, the current fiscal year ending in April of 2019, I'm anticipating that it'll be a surplus. The general fund would still be a deficit of approximately $313,000. In addition, I went through, I had given you the preliminary results for the fiscal year of '18 that just ended. And I went through and tried to look at what we budgeted versus how it actually turned out. We had budgeted in the general fund for a $910,000 deficit. We actually had a $662,000 surplus, which is a swing of $1.5 million. $300,000 of that was sales tax coming in higher than what was anticipated. Again, the state income tax, the two additional payments amounted to about $173,000. Ambulance revenue came in about $67,000 higher than what I had budgeted. And there were a couple other smaller things that we had budgeted for that didn't occur. We always budget $100,000 on the general fund for property purchase in case there's property that comes up that the village needs to acquire. Then we always have that in the budget, which we didn't expend last year. But the main thing that was the biggest push of that change was the street projects came in about $512,000 lower than what was in the budget. And also, we had budgeted for the three-union contracts for the current year and any retroactive pay to be paid out in the fiscal year, which did not occur because we didn't settle any of the contracts during the fiscal year. So I have a little more detail in the information that I provided to you earlier. The other thing, just highlights the gas fund. The surplus came in at $199,000 more than that was budgeted. We had budgeted for $1.2 million and it came in over $1.4 million for surplus on the gas fund. Stormwater fund, we had budgeted for it to have an actual deficit of approximately $213,000 and it actually turned out to be just over $95,000, almost $96,000 surplus. So it was a $309,000 swing on it. So that was good. A part of that was due also to the street projects not costing as much as what we anticipated. Waste water fund, we had budgeted for a $63,000 surplus and the surplus actually ended up being $1.4 million, which is almost $1.3 million swing. $744,000 of that was because of capital outlay costs that we did not have to expend. A big part of that was the water treatment. We had budgeted for some scrubbers. Does that sound right, Craig?
Correct.
So all in all, overall, we had budgeted for approximately $1.3 million surplus in all the funds combined for fiscal year '18 and it ended up being $4.7 million surplus. So fiscal year '18 actually turned out to be a very good year. I had also given you just a snapshot of all the cash balances in all the funds from May 1st of 2011 through May 1st of 2018. And as you can see, just in total, we had $25.5 million in cash in May 1st of 2011. As of May 1st of 2018, we have $45.7 million. The majority of that is restricted use funds. The general fund, which covers the administration, the police, the fire, paramedics, Public Works Administration, streets, it had $7.5 million in 2011 and it's down to $5.6 million in 2018. So there'd been a big dip in the general fund back when we did the Morton Avenue Cortland Street project, took quite a chunk of cash back in 2014 and 2015. So it was down to $4.6 million, it's back up to $5.6 million for the general fund. So of that $45.7 million, only $5.6 can be used for the general fund purposes. And I'll just open it up to questions. Just a synopsis.
Any questions?
I guess a couple, just a little clarity, I guess. So from 2016 to 2017, where did the general fund end up, '16 or '17? End of the year, I guess.
From 2016 to 2017, I can't tell you, the end of the year, end of fiscal year, it went up about $780,000 from...
And ended on what number?
May 1st of 2017, it was just over $5 million.
Just over $5 million. And then, so then for 2018?
It was $5.6.
$5.6.
Yeah. The $600,000 that we discussed, the actual end of results, would increase the cash by that amount. It's a little easier to understand now that when we changed back in 2016's audit, we went from the accrual basis of accounting for our reports, where, you know, you have to the effect of all your receivables and all your payables, we went to cash in and cash out, basically. So it's a little easier to see, we made $600,000, $1,000 and our cash went up that amount because it's pretty much a direct effect onto your cash balance. Like I said, it was $7.4 million in 2011, it's up to $5.6 million. Now, our auditors have suggested they have a limit of what they think you should have in operating funds in order to operate without any stress on your other funds that you would have to borrow monies. They say four to five months of operating expenses should be held in like a reserve so that you always have that amount of money in case some drastic thing were to occur. I figured out that amount would be about $4.6 million for five months of operating expenses. So we have right now, as of May 1st, we had about $1 million in reserves. The way I look at that is, you have about $1 million that if you were to have, you know, say the $300,000 that I'm budgeting for a deficit this year, if that were to occur for three consecutive years, you're going to lose that $1 million and you're not going to have the reserves the auditors are recommending you have. So basically, my concern is that we look to keep us close to a balanced budget, if not a surplus budget as we can, so that we build funds, not use funds. Because you never know what the project that's coming around the bend that might extend the village out too far. I used to work for the city of Canton. At one time, the city of Canton was borrowing money to make payroll. I don't want to ever get to that position. So, you know, we need to maintain the conservative nature that the village has always operated under.
Well, clearly, we ended up better than we thought, but I would say, I'd still say there's probably, there's still a problem at hand, it sounds like, especially with sales tax, knowing that it's been flat for how many years?
And that's one thing I should point out, those changes that occurred for the 2018 budget, I've already taken all that into effect when I did these calculations. I've gone through, I'm budgeting sales tax to remain fairly flat. And that year, I had budgeted it for it to drop based on the estimates that the Illinois Municipal League had given us. But we are fortunate in the fact that we don't have the loss in sales tax like a lot of big cities have seen because, you know, we depend more, our sales tax base depends more on the auto dealerships, the Walmarts. We don't have like Toys R' Us going out of business and Bergner's going out of business and Macy's closing like you see in Peoria. So we have been fortunate that we have our retail and auto sales and other forms of sales tax are from mom-and-pop type businesses and stable businesses that don't see that huge change. Hopefully, we will stay that way.
When the auditors drilled me for at least 20 minutes on the phone, they would like us to have about $5 million, somewhere between $4 and $5 million in there all the time. So when I told her we were above $5 million, she was content with that.
Right.
But we definitely went over $4.
In your research, is there any areas that are just very clear that we've gone up, increased quite a bit as far as how much we're spending in the general fund?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I can tell you off the top of my head that what we're spending for health insurance has since 2008, in the last 10 years, has doubled. You know, and that is something you're seeing across the board. You know, the effect of the Obamacare Administration, or the Act, you know, and the effect of the rising cost of healthcare itself has really pushed the cost of healthcare up.
Do you have that number by chance?
I don't have it with me, but I can provide it to you because we've had that discussion in the past, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director of Fire, no, let's see, Chief of Police.
I have nothing tonight, Grant. But thanks for the fair.
That little girl slept better this week, that's great. Corporation Council?
Thank you. One item for me tonight. I have Resolution 02-19, a resolution authorizing agreement with Morton Paramedics Local 4952, Division of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL, CIO, CLC.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The resolution that, as you close with your pack, it would authorize the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement after a couple of years of negotiations. It's consistent with the end result of those negotiations and the accord that was reached.
Any comments for the trustees?
If I could, I would just like to have perhaps Julie speak to a little bit of, as far as what the contract did in the way of increasing salaries, if she could.
Number one, I want to say the paramedics were very nice to work with. No hostilities and the length of the contract negotiations was probably in part my fault because I'd never done this before. So we probably started out on a pretty rocky road to start with, but they were very cordial and easy to work with. And what we agreed to was, for the calendar year, their salaries are based on a calendar year. For the calendar year 2017, they received no raise to their pay schedule that they had been in the previous contract. They did get their step increases, which from one year to the next, they get an automatic 3% raise until they reach the maximum. So they did get those, they will get those, they haven't got them yet. When the retroactive pay is paid, they'll get paid their step increases, but there was no raise to the schedule itself. For the calendar year 2018, '19, and '20, there will be a 2% increase to the pay scale per year for them. And then we also were able to negotiate with them to increase their health insurance contributions. Currently, they're paying a little less than 5% of the cost and by the end of the contract, that will go up to 6.5% of the cost. We also got some changes to the language, which a lot of was, like we would kind of say, were clerical kind of things because when the first contract was done, it was the very first contract. And so there was a little bit of cleanup language that had to be done. One of the big things that did get added, which I think is a great benefit for the village as a whole, is they would like to have a sick leave donation. So we are working, we've worked out language where they could, if a member of their unit got sick and was unable to work, had used all of their available time off, then they would be able to donate sick time to them to keep them on the payroll for the benefit of the employee himself. So I think that was, do you remember any other big changes, Joe? I think that was pretty much it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Director of Public Works?
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First, in front of you is Item A, and this was discussed last meeting. We just changed a little verbiage at the front after working with Pat. And this would be wave formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from All Service Contracting Corporation for Plant Number Two Filter Rehabilitation in the amount of $186,951.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Not, call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
On that, we also need to get the mayor's vote, we need five summary votes because it's supermajority action.
Yes.
Next is Item B in front of you, wave formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from All Service Contracting Corporation for Plant Number Two Softener Rehabilitation in the amount of $148,762.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Next is Item C. I've been working with Chief Hilliard on this. This would be acceptance of bid for the Morton Police Station Building Addition Project in the amount of $755,220, which includes the base bid, alternate bid number one, and alternate bid number two, and award of contract for same to Peoria Metro Construction Incorporated.
Court of motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
I would like to add a few things, if I could, first, that might help explain a few things here. So we budgeted this year $800,000, which also included some of the design and construction engineering. So I'd like to give some of those dollars to kind of break it down. So as far as design and construction, we have the construction phase still left, which is $11,915. That's added to the portion of the construction documents that came in this fiscal also, for a total of $38,867.55. So if you subtract that from the 800, we have $761,132.45 budgeted. With that, the alternate bids here, you can subtract alternate bid number one and alternate bid number two. Alternate bid number one, I included with this as I'm still dealing with the hail damage claim. Hasn't been a very fun process, but I'm still working through that. Being that we were going to add on to the roof, I felt this be the time to do the roof all at once. Also, to help out with the adjuster on what these costs are, being a competitive bid. So we were, I've had approved $63,921. The alternate bid came in at $93,600. We've received a portion of those funds, I just have to recover the depreciated amount. So I'm going back and forth with the insurance. I'd like to clear this up, get approval tonight for everything, but kind of still clear this up with the adjuster because all the bids came in around $90,000. So I think he's off, you know, 33% on a lot of his numbers, not only on this, but a lot of things throughout the village, on the hail damage claim. We also found some additional damage that was confirmed that they would pay today of $1,370. So I add that because if you really look at the base bid that I stated here, you can take off $94,970, which brings the true base bid towards that budget amount at $660,250. So I think we're about $100,000 below what we budgeted. With that, there are several items also that I wanted to add, that during the work with Keach that we decided to pull away from the contract that we still need to work through. One is stormwater detention. We're going to do some of that work ourselves, so that's an additional cost to expand the basin out front ourselves instead of continuing to spend money on the site work with this. We felt that was the easiest way, along with the landscaping. So we didn't, you know, put a landscaping plan and all that together just because it's a small area out front. So that's something that we would like to add to it and I'd be glad to bring those back as we come forward. There's a chance of stormwater, we may even do in-house with our own people. I'm not sure yet. I kind of want to look at the utilities out there again and kind of weigh that risk. And then the last item, and Craig can speak to this some more, there were a lot of issues even throughout, to diagnose some issues with some electrical locking, he knows a lot more about this than me, that we kind of pulled out of it also. So if you could speak to that briefly.
There's two different areas, both with security of the building, both the cameras and the video systems, as well as the doors and the locks. So we're nearing 14 years old. We've already went through one video system. It lived for about seven years. We're coming on the end of that and we're having to move cameras around. We're having to move our server to another location. There's some costs with that. Move some video cameras and audio systems so that we can comply with statutory requirements on audio and videotaping certain interviews, as well as the expansion of the building's going to be causing the movement, or moving of exterior video cameras. So there's going to be an added cost with that. And then again, some negative experiences that we're having with some of our locking systems on the doors and updating that safety feature for the building.
So this was something that really wasn't included in Keach Architectural and it became what we felt was very difficult. And in some cases, working with the vendors that they're currently working with, tried to assess some of the issues we've got and add that to this. And that's just something we've been working through, you know, throughout this process, just not, I wish it was a little smoother and we could have included everything. But anyway, I wanted to at least add all that, you know, and be able to answer any But anyway, I wanted to at least add all that, you know, and be able to answer any questions that you may have. I'm not saying that we want to spend up to the budget, but I also want to be upfront that there are some additional things outside that amount that we'd like to look at.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions by the trustees?
Yes. Was there some need to, as I recall, move or locate an antenna on maybe the tower? And somehow you've got to get to it or something?
I think that's more of a long-term.
Right, we're, we have our, a tower with antennas for our radio system at the old station, back behind that on the north side. Obviously, when we vacate there, they've got to be moved, and we've been working with AT&amp;T on the monopole back here by the water treatment, water tower on that. But we are also looking with the TC3 and the ETSB with the contract with the Reagan Communications on some microwave that may cause us not to have to get those antennas. So that's to be determined. Yes.
And we have a tower lease, everything downtown. I think it's just going to be at a point where sometime in the future, we're going to have to relook at all that. So we've met with Reagan, and how this kind of even started on my end was AT&amp;T owns the tower, the large monopole on Detroit, so actually they contacted us about reducing rent, and I thought, well, okay, yeah, I'm interested in that, what can you do for me? Can we lease some space on that tower? So that's something that AT&amp;T has been okay with, we just have really never moved forward with all the logistics to get that done at this point, but I think those options are still there, it's just looking into all those other costs. And the real issue is really where the, and both these guys could speak to it better than me, but it's really where the radios are at from the tower, and those are inside the building or behind the building there, and those need to be in a better location long-term.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, call it all.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is Item D, acceptance of proposal from I-Work Systems for Public Works Management Software in the amount of $25,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
I would like to add some follow-up. I sent an email out to all of you. I'm excited about this, this is something we've been working towards for a better part of my time here, to improve our operations, and we had budgeted this year, and I had discussed it previously, out of the gas and wastewater, to improve our asset management, our maintenance management, and we had budgeted $17,000 out of both of those. Upon looking into software for each of those, this kind of came out of it, and all the superintendents have sat in on demos on multiple occasions. We've gone through this, and I think all of us are on board where this would be a web or cloud-based solution that would be compatible throughout Public Works. It's going to be a challenge long-term to always continue to move forward with that. I've got all of their buy-in, including the mechanic and all that, so I really think this is going to really improve our operations. Another tool that is on there, a part of this, is a citizen engagement tool. At some point here in the near future, I'd like to even, at a meeting here, kind of show that tool, but this would be a solution that a lot of communities are going to, where citizens will be able to easily upload, I don't want to say complaints, but issues. Let's say there's a pothole, let's say there's a street light out, it'll be an easier process to upload that and send it on to the appropriate people. And I think a lot of other communities, we followed up with other cities like Freeport, some of those that are using these tools. So I think this will be a really neat tool long-term that we can continue to build on, that even the citizens can enjoy also as a result of that. So like if they submitted a work order, whatever, that can easily be turned over, you know, from a work order from myself to somebody else, not that we don't want to keep communicating verbally, but we're just in a different time now where we can easily shift that over, and those things can be taken care of, and then from my point of view in the superintendence, we can make sure those things are followed up. So we can also make sure that those things are closed out, so that we're not missing when a citizen has a complaint on something or a concern that we're following up. It will also limit, sometimes the time we spend, I don't want to phrase this in a bad way, I'm always willing to meet with citizens, residents that have complaints, but to spend several hours on a pothole that we're already aware of, I'm hopeful this will streamline that to where, just let us know, we know what a pothole is, and we'll fix it. Hopefully, this streamlines even that process where we're spending a little less time on those things and focusing more on actually getting it done. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions. I'm obviously very excited about this.
Question about the cost, the $25,000 is the purchase and startup cost.
Yeah, the $7,500 is the startup, just kind of loading everything up and working with us over the next, you know, 90 to 120 days is going to take time. The $17,500 is the recurring cost annually.
Okay.
And with this, if you go through this, this is pretty much, you know, all the departments. Gas management, which was the big one, and the gas management is something we've got to move forward with. The feds are continually cracking down on small systems like ourselves. I don't want to say they're friendly with us, but I think sometimes when there's incidents, it makes it difficult for us to keep up, so they're keep coming with new regulations. So this is something we have to do, I think this is a great tool to help us with that. But then also stormwater, water management, sewer management, facilities management, and fleet management, it would take care of all those things, and those things would all communicate together. The biggest thing is, we'd all have everything at our fingertips. If you guys have a question for me in regards to facilities, fleet, even at this meeting, I'll be able to answer all those questions. Maintenance to vehicles, there's no reason our mechanic has to follow up with people to find out if they've had an oil change or not. People can manage their own vehicles and help with that. So I think there's going to be a lot of accountability on other departments. I would like to even work, as we go forward, with fleet, with police, paramedic, you know, fire, some of those things too, to, I want to get it kind of figured out first, but I think it will really improve accountability from pretty much every individual too. So everything will be at our fingertips, so hopefully you guys will benefit also from that. Not that I want to give the mayor a password on that stuff, but.
Have your fun.
But we want, we want to be able to timely answer questions. I have struggled in the last few years just on fleet management, facilities, and I feel like I need to be a little more knowledgeable, our HVAC contract, all that stuff should be uploaded for maintenance history on all these sort of things and at our fingertips. The tools are there to do it, might as well do it. I think long-term, they'll be a savings by going with this type of program. And with this company too, there's no increase ever. They've been doing this for, I think it was almost 20 years, so as you get on board, there's no increase, and all the service and all that is included in that cost, so there should be no additional cost to this, even in the future. Obviously, we're probably subsidizing some of the other that got on really cheap and are enjoying the benefits of that, but same cost annually.
Anything else? Not, call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Lastly, I have Item E. This is the Household Hazardous Waste Community Cleanup Event for Saturday, July 7th, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the bus facility at 250 West Cortland Street. I'd just like to make an announcement on that. So Steve, if you want to help us with that, get the information out, this is for Morton residents. When 2:30 comes around, it's done. So the deal we have through area disposal, through Viola, is just a certain timeframe, so please come early, get in line, at some point, they will shut it off, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning and zoning.
Three items tonight, Your Honor, the first being special use petition number 18-02, 1629 Copperfield Drive. This is for a residential solar system roof mount. We actually have two of these cases to deal with tonight, both on residential properties. It's first, our first go at this since the adoption of our new ordinance. The Plan Commission held its public hearing. There were no objections at all. Both of this case was unanimously supported, so I bring that to you tonight. That's for 1629 Copperfield Drive.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second case is special use petition number 18-03 SP 304 North Nebraska, the very same thing, it's a residential roof mount solar system. Again, there were no, everyone was notified, just like we typically would do, everybody was in 250, we had no objectors, and it was unanimously supported.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Yes.
Last case, Your Honor.
I just do want to add, Rog, they're both contractors, so we should see how nice they turn out.
How it works.
How it works, and you could follow up on that for looks and.
Both of these, the way the roof lines lay out, the one on Nebraska is not really going to be visible from the front, I mean, obviously, as you're driving down the street, you might see it from the side, and the one at 1629 Copperfield has just one small array that you might see from the front, but beyond that, it's, I don't know that they look a whole lot different than a big skylight, but we'll see how it goes.
Well, if it needs improvement, I'm sure you'll come up with an idea.
Oh, yeah. If I can't figure it out, Pat can help me, so. The last item is a, the mural ordinance that we've been working on for quite some time. And I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. Pat was the author of this. I actually suggested that the first mural that we have should be Pat, it should be Pat sitting at his computer writing this ordinance. I don't know if that'll actually happen, but, like I said, I'll hit some of the highlights here.
We could get him a bear.
Yeah, there we go. The murals, first of all, are not going to be on any residential property, whether it be a single-family home or apartment building, whatever. It's going to be on a property that's either zone, commercial, or industrial. And it's strictly going to be based upon a body like yourselves, the Village of Morton, the school district, park district, they will have to champion this cause. There will be, if they come to us, we can ask some questions, if we're going to be the person responsible for it. That might be, it might be a commercial building that they, there'd be some sort of a lease with, between the village or the park district or the high school or the, one of the schools to put that mural on that building. They will be the teams working together then. There's not going, it won't be Sam, for example, your business, if you decide to locate here in Morton, you want to put the mural up, you would have to go through this same process. We beat this thing to death, literally. The same question came up time and time and time again, and it was all content, you can't control the content of this thing. I think Pat ran out of ways to say that you can't control the content of this. So this way, we feel like there's going to be, we're going to have a little bit of input into this, and there's already interest through the chamber. Leanne had emailed, they would like to do eight or 10 murals throughout the town here somewhere for Pumpkin Festival. These would be maybe eight by eight, that was the size that was in the email. But beyond that, we've not worked anything out yet, so I said, well, we first need to get this ordinance passed by the village board before we can do anything. And then there'd be, it'd be, they'd have to submit a plan. It covers lighting, you aren't going to be able to light up your, the neighbor building next door to you, it's going to be, have to be, you know, strictly focused upon that building, and they can do all that, a lighting company, that's not a big deal. Pat, you feel free to jump in, after all, you wrote it, so.
Yeah, the biggest kind of distinction and further explain the issue that was kind of continual hangup, if you remember, we had a proposed ordinance that the Plan Commission recommended disapproving, which you guys voted on and recommended further Plan and Commission proceedings. And the problem with the first ordinance and a issue here is we have a First Amendment free speech implications from how we regulate murals, and if we have an ordinance that permits public art and private art, we can regulate public art in certain ways that we can't regulate private art. Private art, Sam wanting to put a mural on his building, anybody on their own, is an area in which we can't control content. We can't make them give us plans of what they're going to do, we can control time, place, and manner, not content. The Plan Commission was uncomfortable with that concept, which led to the recommended disapproval of the prior draft. This draft permits public art, that's art that is put up by public bodies, that could be in partnership with private developers, it could be a public body's own interest in development, but this ordinance only permits public art. Throughout our several meetings on this, it seemed to be a recurring theme that somebody would reference another community in which there are murals, and we felt like it may give us a model to follow, and we've generally found that every time we've explored those, at the back end of it, it's a public art process. We had some people come and speak about what's happening in Peoria with murals, at the back end, it's a public art process, there are city murals that the city puts up, and so that's what this ordinance would allow, and private parties could essentially partner or donate, or donate their space to facilitate it, but that provides us the degree of content control, which I think meets with the sensibilities of Plan Commission, and I think would probably further reflect the sensibilities of board based on the feedback we got at the last time this issue came up.
I could just add a couple things. One, the process on Item E is administrative review process, which that application would come to me. I personally, how I plan to do that is I'm going to be working with Pat, I'm going to, I don't want to get in some rights dispute with someone, so I'm going to include him and so he can keep me out of trouble. And then there's always, and I brought it up at the Plan Commission, in anything that I do, there's, if someone doesn't like the answer that I give them, they always have the right to come in here and ask you to, if they want to appeal, if I think my interpretation of the ordinance isn't correct, they can always bring that to you, and that's, that would still be the case, so I hope I'm not going to be doing that to you, but that's, they have that right, so.
Okay. Do you guys want to make motions and vote on this tonight, or you want to think about it, or? Then we're looking for motions.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
On behalf of the Plan Commission, we thank you.
Okay, village trustees, do any of you have anything to note?
6-4 on the top of the sixth at the Augustana, so Morton is the visiting team, so we're hitting right now 6-4 in the sectional, the super sectional championship, so I've got the updates. The Morton Travel Light, it's 19 to 7, and now we're leading in the fifth, and so it's a land L in life, so I'm happy with that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I want to express my appreciation for all the work that you put in tonight's meeting, but a special thank you to Julie for the time for, for the follow-up for the last meeting, so appreciate it. meeting, so appreciate it.
We do need a motion to go into closed session, it might be a long one, we don't plan on any action.
Closed session tonight is requested under 5 ILC S 120/2C2, to discuss collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Words.